And call Jesse to the sacrifice and I will show thee what thou shalt do and thou shalt anoint unto me him whom I name unto thee.
Esa ay balivirundukka alai payaga, appurudha nee seyavendhey neen aanunukka arivipain, neen aanunukku sollugaravanay, enakaka abishayakam bannavaayaagai enrad.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Indike abishayakate kuruithudana, oru teelivana arivai sabai purindukollavendhu avasiyam.
Today is very important for us to understand the church about the anointing.
Avasiyam illama yaari elumbadinya.
And without urgency, don't depart the place.
Ongalenee arathu ningal bainbadhigal.
Make use of the time.
Abishayakam enbadhu puiderpattu sabaiyundu yappoorunudukkaaha anupappatta oru deviikasakti.
Anointing is the divine power which is sent to the perfection of the New Testament church.
Abishayakam entra vaartai palayarpattilum irukkada, puiderpattilum irukkada.
The word "anointing" is found both in New Testament and Old Testament.
Abishayakam entra vaartai hindukkelum mattamadathinadu ovyakupaduthukkaraark.
The word "anointing" is used by the Hindu religion and other religion.
Anal avargal mattae vikrungangalukka abishayakam bannukkararkal, anal inge jeevanoodu irukkaranam abishayakam bannappadukar.
But here they are anointing to the idols, but we are anointing to the living one.
Avargal vikrungangalukka paala abishayaka, neyya abishayaka, andha abishayakallam panuvaa, adu kalukku manukku mantra, anal namukka apodi alla, devan nammai unnadathin belathinal, aviinal abishayakam bannukkar.
They anoint with all milk and oil and anything with idols for sand and stone, and but the Lord is anointing us with great anointing.
Palayarpattu abishayakathukku, puiderpattu abishayakathukku, vithyaasam unda.
There is a great difference between the Old Testament anointing and New Testament anointing.
Palayarpattila kathodiyae aviyanavrindra alaike padukar, puiderpattla parisutha aviyanavrindra alaike padukar.
In the Old Testament, it is called as the spirit of the Lord, but in New Testament, it is called as the whole spirit.
Palayarpattila ennain mulamaga, thailat abishayakathailamanikara, thailathin mulamaga, abishayakam bannappattark.
And through oil, through anointing oil, and they were anointed in the Old Testament.
Enneyo abishayakamo illada pachchathil.
And in case if there is no oil and there is, if there is anointing oil.
Saalvayathukibodhu abishayakam bannappattade, nambeerathale parkumudi.
They cast the mantle upon them, they are anointed.
Andha abishayakathala anyabasek kadayadu.
And there is no unknown tongues in that anointing.
Andha abishayakathala oru vallamay arango.
And the anointing, the power will descend.
Andha vallamay nirantharamay irukkada.
And it will not be so permanent.
Teavai podumbodu, andha vallamay arango.
If it is needed, the anointing power will come.
Adu avargalai prisitipattu oru lai maathinade, thavara parisuthamulla oru lai maathavillai.
And that making a people so familiar and did not make them to so anointing.
Ovaru sthanathir kaka, avargal abishayakam bannappattark.
According to the position, they were anointed.
Senkalarthukondrunda oru manidhanay, abishayakam bannina boladu, avan asariyanaay maathappattan.
When the pharaoh was anointed and he will become a priest.
Senkalarthukondrunda varanay, ipoladu asariyanaay devan maathukkar.
And one who went to the sea and become the high priest.
Adumayuthukondrunda varanay, raja vaka oru maathukkar.
And one have become, flocking the sheep and become a king.
Yairpooti vivasayam seethukondrunda varanay, tirukadrisiaka abishayakam bannukkar.
And one was farming the land, had become a prophet.
Kathodiyae sanidhanathile irundhu tuudanay, kaapathukaravna kaabishayakam bannukkar.
One who was found with the presence of the Lord was found upon his protégus.
Devan thanudiyekumaranaakiya krustuvai, suvisheshakana kaabishayakam bannukkar.
And father made his son as an evangelist.
Ipidi ovaru sthanathirkum, abishayakam andha naatkali thaevai paduk.
In those days, anointing was needed according to the position.
Anabidinala tirukadrisi, yappodudu oru abishayakathailamanikara oru kombai vaitirupar.
So the prophets will have the anointing oil as a home.
Puiderpattu palayarpattila, nam parkumboladu, asariyarulukku, ilavital, ipidi padu oru uuliyam kodukappadundadu.
In Old Testament, we can see such a ministry was given to the high priest.
Abishayakathailamandru onray, neen nerapi eduthu ayyathappadavaid.
And you have to prepare an anointing oil.
Adukkina nanna porulkal sharekapadavaid.
And these are the things that were added.
Avasiyam illamala, adu chigiravan, kolaisayappadakkada.
And without any need, if it is doing, it should become murder.
Adu inanna ratiole sharekavaid.
And according to particular ratio, it should be joined.
Adha asariyani appodu vaitirupar.
And priest have to keep this always.
Devanudiyay manidharukkundiyay kayalay irukku.
And it should be found in the man of God.
Ingene nam parthaboladu, samuelude kayle, indha abishayakathailam, andha kuppiyala nerappappadundadu.
When we look here, we are able to see in Samuel's hand, the anointing oil was found.
Adutthu nam parkumboladu, elisa vinkay, kayle, andha abishayakam irundadu.
That anointing was vested in the hands of Elisa.
Avan thanudiyavelekarnay pathichon, antaila kuppiy nerapi kondu poindu sollukkar.
And he asked the servant to fill the anointing oil with vessel and go.
Abai ivagilirundha, nam vellengikullavodhi enna?
What do we understand from this?
Palayarpattla indha abishayakam irundadu.
The Old Testament, their anointing was there.
Avargal vallemiululaay maarinaark.
Had made them powerful.
Simpsonmel indha vallemay aranginaboladu, singathikli pann.
When the anointing rested upon Samson, he will tore up the line.
Anal avande tanipattavalkaila jayam illada.
But there is no overcoming life in his individual life.
Avargal indha abishayakavaramboladu, oru barakravanaay maaruvaan, mattabadi, avay engkayadu pooyavavitliyadu paduthuduvaa.
When the anointing comes, he become a mighty person and heavily on some other home. Why?
Palayarpattil, yedavudu ondril purnamirundhal pothu.
In Old Testament, if there is one perfection, there is enough.
Anal puiderpattila apodi alla.
But in New Testament, it is not like that.
Ellavathil oru manidhan purnathipetukollavad.
And he have to receive perfection in every aspect.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Nam vedathile parkumboladu.
When we see in the scripture.
Nam sariyana, muntrukattu abishayakathipetukollavaid.
We have to receive three kinds of anointing.
Indraya message, muntrukattu abishayakam.
Today's message is three aspects of anointing.
Kathar ungalukku tuudukukka virmugarar, adu muntrukattu abishayakam.
The three states of anointing.
Nengela abishayakam bettavukaada.
We are all anointed.
Puiderpattla nengae, ellarume, nengal anyabasek pesukirir.
In New Testament period, we all speak in unknown tongues.
Anal innikina, indha prasangam muriyadukulaa.
Before the preaching gets over.
Indha, endha abishayakathal ningal irukkingaradu, ningal analyze panav.
You have to analyze and which anointing you have.
Modal abishayakama.
First anointing.
Endavud abishayakama.
A second anointing.
Munaavud abishayakama.
A third anointing.
Idhala endha abishayakathal irukkingaradu, nengale kandubidikal, andha vasanakal kakkumode, avargalukku purindukundama endha erathal okandurukaront, kandubidichiruv.
While you hear the word of God, you are able to identify in which state as you are found.
Adena indike avargalukku mundaavake, oru aviila yavapadukar.
I am urged in spirit to present before you.
Nengal vedathile parkumboladu.
When we see in the scripture.
Saulay kuruithi nengal padithal.
When we read about Saul.
Saul oru visay, oru kattu abishayakathemattu dan paduk.
And Saul received only one kind of anointing.
Salamuni nengal padithupattal.
When we look into Solomon.
Avanikirandankattu abishayakathukvandha, anmuntrankattu abishayakathukvaravaid.
He came to the second state of anointing and did not come to the third state.
Anal taavidin valkay parthal.
When we look into the life of David.
Avan muntrankattu abishayakathukvandichaita.
He reached the third state of anointing and overcome.
Avargalke nilayana veedu kattappattad.
And the state of the house was built upon him.
Avan desam vaaktha tammanappattad.
And the land was promised for him.
Avanike nilayana sudandaram kadayadu.
And there was the proper inheritance found to him.
Eddiyana erathal avanukku oru panku kadayadu.
And he received the proper praising.
Indike namdya subject, taavidinudiyay muntrukattu abishayakam.
And today's our subject is the three states of anointing of David.
Palayarpatti, ellame puiderpattinudiyadhistrandangal.
And the Old Testament anointing and three New Testament examples.
Adenam sariyana vedathile vellengikollavaid.
We have to identify in a proper way.
Ingge taavidinudiyabishayakathetha nam ipodudu paditho.
We are meditating about this, the anointing of David.
Taavidin abishayathukku, sauludiyabishayathukka rembu different.
There is a vast difference between the anointing of David and anointing of Saul.
Nengalvana aga padichuparanga.
When we read this.
Onnusamwel 16:3. Naan unakku chollugaravanay, enakaka abishayakam bannu.
And you have to anoint them that tell you.
Idhu taavidinudiyabishayakam, kattar kaka abishayakam bannappattavan.
And this was the anointing of David, who was anointed for God.
Anal onnusamwel patthamadikaram modalavasanaate parkumboladu.
But when we look into first Samuel, chapter 10, verse 1.
Angesauludiyabishayakam sollappadukkar.
And here it is mentioned about the anointing of Saul.
Aden abishayakam?
What was that?
Talayvanaka abishayakam.
And he was anointed as a captain.
Adu janathin talayvanana abishayakam, taavidinudiyabishayakam, devanukkundri, valagbudiyanabishayakam.
And anointing of the Saul is anointing, because a captain for the people, but the anointing of David is to live for God.
Neeyadukaka abishayakam bannappattai.
For what you are anointed.
Adha innake mukkiyamana.
And that is very important today.
Onnusamwel 1:16. Ange kattarsamueludhi le modal nalai solivittar.
And the first day, the Lord mentioned him.
Isravelin adhibidiaka, avanay abishayakam bannu.
And you anoint him as a captain over my people of his ring.
Abishayakathunadu nokkadan ningal purindukollav.
And we must identify the purpose of the anointing.
Saulin abishayakam, aalukisigara abishayakam, taavidin abishayakam, kattarkaha valakkudiya abishayakam.
Anointing of Saul is to rule over the people, but anointing of David is to live for God.
Oru posting kaka, avanuka abishayam kadayadu.
The anointing was received to Saul for posting.
Anal adheen kodu avanal kaapathamudiyavell.
But he could not able to preserve it.
Adhey elumbadu taavitthan.
He lost it and he was still.
Abishayakamu velasindhu, pisasa avanukkula velasindhu.
Anointing worked on him as Satan worked on him.
Oray taithalavi naravuva, aray taithalapisasa avanukkula varu.
At the same time, he fell in spirit at the same time, and Satan will enter in him.
Indi narakuma?
Will it happen?
Namdya aalgal orusalallan alla anyabasek pesukranga.
And some of our people used to speak in unknown tongues well.
Kettavartim pesukranga.
They speak bad words.
Nalla anyabasek besukranga.
They speak unknown tongues well.
Chandayum porak.
And they quarren.
Nalla abishayathal narambraaga.
They speak in unknown tongues well.
Avargal adathavandu sottayam athrak.
And they achieve the positions of others.
Nalla abishayathal narambraaga.
They feel in anointing.
Avargal opuravaka, manneke, sagike, vinnumudiyavill.
But they could not endure, but they could not reconcile and forgive others.
Idhala irundha, avargal abishayathin thanme, nam vellengikollav.
From this, we can identify their aspect of anointing.
Nengal sauludiyabishayatheparkumboladu.
When we look into the anointing of Saul.
Onnusamwel 18:10.
Maranoolili devanala vidappattu pollada avi, saulin mail erangittu, avan veedikulay, dhirgadrisam sollikondirundha.
Nengal indha vasathal rendu poththani ga bakala.
We can see two parts in this verse.
Onndri devanala vidappattu pollada avi, saulin mail erangittu.
One is the evil spirit from God came upon Saul.
Adhey same time, innoravi velasidhu tirkadasinam sollikondruntha.
At the same time, he prophesies.
Abai enna artho?
What does it mean?
Oray, oray timele, aviila narabra, adhutthakkan etirkasun jolra, adheen arthla tension ayirra.
As same person, as in moment of time, he fell in spirit and he prophesied.
Ingelikkar, 900 veri ipidi thaarkiyega.
Here, 90 percentage of people are found in that city.
Anayathuruday valkay ipidi thaark.
Many of your life are like that.
Abishayakam enbadhu, onnudiyavalkaila oru asayavoh, kudipayoh, kal, thalulayoh, yavaneepo idikkaradukaka kodukappadu sakthi alla.
Anointing is not the power which should be shaken or dashed upon anything.
Onnudiyuillaanamunshin belappadumidiyaka kodukappadu oru undu sakthi.
It is a power, it is given to the Eden, might get strengthened.
Anal idhu, avasariyana vedathile saul, ubayavappaduthavillai.
But Saul did not use in a proper way.
Avanukka naradukkeedenna?
What happened to him?
Abishayathundu adhutthastappay, avay manindla varla.
The next step with the anointing did not enter in his mind.
Abishayathathavapudupikevaylla.
He did not renew his anointing.
Nikbaranga license apudupikevadu, enna narakku?
If they are not renewing their license, what will happen?
Huh? Ilavatal avargalde, visaavapudupikevadu, enna narakku?
If you do not renew your visa, what will happen?
Avargal pasport apudupikevadu, enna narakku, na avargalitere.
And you know, if you are not renewing your passport, what will happen?
Adhubola, abishayathali oru pudidakkadhal irundukiteeruk.
Likewise, there is a renewable anointing.
Alalata taavidu sollukkaran, yenin, puduyeninala abishayakam bannukkar.
So David say, "Anoint my, the new oil."
Apidi tha avan aathay sollukkar.
That's what he used the word.
Thithu muntreayindle parkumboladu.
When we look into Titus, chapter 3, verse 5.
Parisutha aviin pudidakkadhalinal, namirachittha.
The Lord saved us by the renewing of spirit.
Abai ovurunnaalu parisuthaaviila oru pudhu anointing irukk.
Every day, there is a new anointing in the holy spirit.
Namakirubayapati padikirao.
We read, study about grace.
Namakirubaykuda puiderkirubayirukkar.
And there is a new grace.
Namalangalapadu verry, ennekova angana oru kirubayavichidu sutidayirga.
And some are wandering with the old grace that are received.
Expirate date, thanthipidichina.
And they have crossed the expiry date.
Adhu dana? Andha palayakirubayavichidu, paathupadhradu, kaitathatrada, allalia podhradu, abhyavodhradu.
With the old grace that they receive, they sing and song and they shout hallelujah.
Endhavurukkariyame expiry agamboladu, adu konjanal kalkchadu yedha maro, vashamamaro.
When a particular thing got expiry and it become a poison later.
Adhubola abishayukkoda, nee sariyaa usepanlena, adu onakav kedaamaro.
If you do not use the anointing properly, it became a treachery for you.
Nengal bible, nengal padichupadigal.
When you look into the Bible.
Abishayakam betta oru varshathala, saul andha abishayakathayelantad.
And with an anointing, he received one year, he lost the anointing which he received.
Adukkuparagam 31 varshaavrajaavayirunda.
And thereafter, when after 39 years, he was a king.
39 years, avan rajaavayirundalo, abishayakam illada oru raja.
And he was the king without anointing and for 39 years.
Adha avan lifele nengal pakala.
We can see in that in his life.
Taavidanai bulavaridikideerpa.
And he was chasing a David like a dog.
Samayam gadekumala, eetiyarindikideerpa.
And he will take the chavla and throw upon him.
Yonathana kettavartellaklikilinkilicham.
And he spoke in evil words with Jonathan.
Kadaisila anjanabakkavane, kurisulavane, thadi pona.
At last, he was seeking after the magicians and sorcerers.
Abishayathathelakkumboladu, narakkaratthingugal, adhu da.
And these are the evil things when happen, will lose anointing.
Avargal abishayakam talayvan, abhiibadiin abishayakam.
And the anointing over his head was captain.
Anal taavidin abishayaka apidi padukada alla.
But the anointing of David was not like that.
Kathar abishayam unupaday cholrara, ivanay enakaka abishayakam bannu.
When the Lord anointed him, told him, "You anoint for me."
Indha abishayathavichida, avan enkaka vartrala, enakaka varan.
And he could not live for himself and he had to live for me.
Ippaniga paranga, avargal abishayaka, enna paranga.
Now you check, what is your anointing?
Ippaniga kandubidichiruv.
You have to identify yourself.
Namdya irka, paketla irka, illan, kandubidichil.
Is it found in a packet or not?
Adhutthakana nam parkumboladu.
When we look next.
Solomon, 1:33.
Solomon was anointed twice.
Onnurajakkal, 1:33.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 1, verse 33.
Ingge modalmodalaga, avan abishayakam bannappadukar, oru sunnani, oru kattalayay nam parkum.
And this is occasion he anointed first time.
Avargal rajalkukmundaavak pravishtapodhu, rajalaklinoki, neengal avargal aandamradu yesevakarekutikondu, enkumaranaakiya salamone, enkoveer kadithinameliachi, avaniki gounukka adhitukondupungal.
Opadu umbadu.
Asarinagi sadokku thailakombai, koodaathirundu edhuthukondupoy, salamone abishayakam banninaa.
Salamone abishayakam banninaa.
He anointed Solomon.
Modalavasavasithavasanam, avan abishayakam bannakutikondupongalindu cholukkar.
And the first thing is occasion, they are asking to bring this Solomon to anoint.
Endavud vasanam cholukkaradu, avanay abishayakam banninaa.
And the second verse said that they anointed Solomon.
Andha life epdi irunduchidari ma?
And see how was the life?
Avam balisalathina, kattar pesuvaa.
And when he after sacrifice, the Lord will speak to him.
Orunnal balisalathidita, angkayavadukkada.
He offered a sacrifice and slept there.
Avay aranmanilirundhi, gibionlo pooy balisalathira.
And he went, came from a palace to, went to get gone to.
Ipar rajaavamariach.
Now he became a king.
Analu abishay, andhadatla balisalathidide, kattadu vittliyekadak.
Now he offered a sacrifice and stayed in the house of God.
Abishayakam narambinavalkay, uavveedukonukku pooga asavaradu, kattadu vittliyirukunna asavaru.
But you feel in the anointing that you receive and he will never allow you to go to your home, it will make it to stay in the house of God.
Agamiyakku darangil, thangodiparkil, umdya aalayithil, prakarathil, thangum orunnalay sirandadu.
And it was better than a day to stay in the house of God, than rather to stay in the other house.
Anal enna narathadu?
But what had happened?
Andha kerev, kattar avarudupesina.
That night, the Lord communed with him.
Andha abishayathin nerivellarundaboladu.
When he was filled with anointing.
Onakkenna venunka edunkar.
And asked what you want.
Avan enne esana?
And he replied.
Andavre, nan chinnapilla, enakkinyaanamtha.
And he said, "I was so angry, give me a wisdom."
Indha abishayaka, avanay nyanavanai uruvaakina.
And this anointing made him a wise person.
Indha abishayaka, avanay thalaisarandavanai maachin.
And this anointing made him a great person.
Avargalkumunnalay apidi, nyaniyavon kadayadu, pinnalayyavon nyanavan kadayadu.
And there is no wise person before and after him.
Appidi padu oru abishayathala, avan irundha.
And such anointing was rested.
Ipoladu aalayathetka kattar arambituvita.
Now he started to build up a temple.
Aalayam melibikondayavargar.
Now the temple started raising.
Ipoladu narandadu enna?
What had happened then?
Onnunnalakamam.
First chronicles. When we look at the 20 second verse.
Ipoladu rendavisay abishayathukavan varukkar.
And he came to the second part of anointing.
Avargal andrayidina, migindasandoshathode, kattarkumunbaga, bojana bana bani, naalidin kumaranaakiya salamone, irandavisay rajaavaki.
Yavloberi, avan anubav kadayadu.
And see how a great experience he received.
Oru visay abishayakam bannappattu, ipoladu topla vandach.
Now he anointed once and came to the top position.
Avanukka andha abishayathala, yavuname yutunikumdiya.
And no one can resist against it, anointing.
Andha alav abishayaka, avan talamela vandrich.
And such anointing, rest up on his head.
Andha modalkattu abishayathala, avan oru sariyana neravai petukonda.
And he received the fullness of anointing in the first time.
Vedam enna sollukkaradu.
What does the scripture say?
Andha abishayathukumunnalay, yarame nikumdiya.
And no one can stand before him with that anointing.
Indha abishayam kattachaparake.
After he received that anointing.
Avan de life is sutthama maripooy.
His life was completely changed.
Avargalke endhavidamana poratam kadayadu.
And there was no conflict to him.
Onnusamwel 1:5.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 5, verse 4.
Analu vipparadu, endayunaga, kattar, engkum enakiliparadali tandaa, viroodiyam illai, idayooru millai.
Endhaporatam kadayadu.
And there was no conflict for him.
Andha modal abishayaka, avanukku oru sariyana neravai koduthuvada.
And the first anointing gave him a fullness.
Ippidu moodinju odane, ippa aalayathakattava readyaagara.
After that, he started to build up a temple.
Ippavam mindle, rendavud abishayathukpoonunnu oru asav.
Now he got a desire to come to the second level or second status of anointing.
Ipoladu abishayathil, rendavud visaykavargar.
And he came to the second time of anointing.
Orutthukka rajaavayichilla, tripiyareyadu rajaavakavangala.
And once he became a king, and how it is possible to make him take second time?
Eleksyalle jechcha, adhutthu prudhamamudriyavarlaa.
When he become, when in election, they can become.
Ivanana rajaavayirukkar.
Already he was a king.
Thirumbavana rendavisay rajaavak.
Again, they become a king second time.
Idhu abishayathundu ran, second portion.
And this is the second part of portion of the anointing.
Orusalapilengal, sunday school padikumbo, abishayam varrag.
Some of our children, they receive anointing during sunday school.
Adavachav, avaralkaila maathamilla, poralavu visuvasiyarukku.
And there is no change in their life and they become an ordinary believer.
Nanmayedu, teamayedu, enbadu lan thirinji, valkaila poratangala sandikumboladu, indha abishayathay useponunu, adha rendavud abishay.
To discern the good or bad or evil, and when go to the second part of their life and they must need of this anointing.
Abishayathathan alla useponunu.
They have to make use of the anointing properly.
Abishayathathan nam sariyaa useponunna, waste.
If we are not using properly, it is waste.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May God's Holy Name be glorified.
Naanegichonnay.
I told you already.
Namdya sunday school pilligala, neema sariyavakilanna, yavuna pisasi, enkayadu, thalli konduvasathruva.
If you do not rope your children, charge sunday school children properly, the Satan may cast them somewhere.
Abishayathala, avan adhutthastappukkondubonu.
And you have to take them to the next step with the anointing.
Sunday school padichamattu bodad.
It is not enough that you have learnt sunday school.
Centrepise, setkamattu bodad.
It is not enough, they get to center price.
Adhu thaev.
It is needed.
Anadhey pillay abishayathalakondubonu.
At the same time, you have to leave your children in anointing.
Andha, andha pillay, adhutthi, erusle, mikinaradivertpanam.
And you have to divert your children towards erisina.
Avam melarukkada abishayathapattu, sio neen abishayana, sio neen okkayavana, divertpanam.
And look into the anointing, what they have, and you have to divert them to the anointing of Zion.
Naanegichonnay, inge velulavudachonnay.
Already, I told, that I told in velu.
Ippa samivathal, oru periyasinima, vandhu, ravichikarama, odiyit.
Recently, there was a cinema, it was going Hitler.
Adhalo oru thanadikaravada.
And there was actor.
Oru famous actor.
And he was a famous actor.
Avargalke ellargundirin, nengal thirtuthanama, andha padalam paathirpi.
And you all know well, and you have seen the cinema.
Padiverry, vittla, idhi time pass, nee adhatavakaduka, time pass, avaraki jabathaladu arukkun, metavare, TV munnalarkupad.
Your time pass should be in prayer and not in television.
Oru visuvasikin, indha velakathal entertainment kadayadu.
There is no entertainment, entertainment for a believer.
Ah, ilakparan kaalam ini, varukarada irukkaradu.
And the coming of the Lord is soon.
Nengipasamivathal, padikina, prabhasan, oru nadikaravada.
And recently, we can see a actor called Prabhas.
Prabhas. Avan andharala, namivisvasi, sunday school padichapayya.
And he was a believer who learnt sunday school.
Oru time marikam, sunday school padichana, avuulyakaradu, sondakarapayya.
And to a particular period, he learnt sunday school and he was related to a servant of God.
Avargalke andha abishayaka irundichan, teriella?
I do not know whether he had that anointing.
But avan adhutthastappu deviikathalavarlaa.
And he did not come to the next step of divinity.
Avan lead pannala.
He was not leader in that thing.
Yar lead pantaipo?
Who led him?
Yar kontrollpantaa?
Who controlled him?
Ha, velakathin adhibadi kontrollpantaa.
The prince of the world controlled him.
Avan thookkundu, engavutidaa, Indiaalak second lakundu, utidaa.
And he made him to the top, second top position of India.
Nengyoosu paranga.
You'll think and see.
Namdya valkay epidi iruk.
What hope is our life?
Avargal life, neengasariyaa abishayathal, maintainpanlan, pisasoni, angkya konduvas, padalakthal thookipotupidu.
If you maintain not your life in a proper way, and life Satan may pass you in a bottomless pit.
Idhu unarundadana, salamone, rendavud abishayathukvarra.
And he, who examined Solomon, came to the second position of the anointing.
Avan kettukka.
And he asked.
Paathukka.
And he has seen.
Avargal appavukkadichabishayathala, avan pathukkadeev.
And he had seen the anointing with the father received.
Avarukku bastukkaduchidu.
And the first time, he received.
Adhutthukkaduchidu.
Second time, he received.
Munaavud kadayadu.
He received third time.
Avar cheshtare.
And he conquered.
Yavlo poratavunnal, winbandare.
And he overcome many kinds of conflict and over.
Anal, ivam mindle, adhutthabishayathukvarra.
So he came to the second step of anointing.
Anar rendavud abishayathukvandha, peragu, avan life maintainpanla.
After he came to the second step of the anointing, he could not maintain his life.
Kattar unakku panathuk kodupadu.
God will give you money.
Ah, unakku vasadi kodupadu.
He will give you wealth.
Nee adha sariyaa useponunna, unavutupaidam.
If you do not use it properly, it will depart from you.
Unakku kodupadu.
He will, he will receive.
Nee sabayathangavan kodupadu.
And he will give you, that he will sustain the church.
Onmaya iruppayindru kodupadu.
Counting you, that you will be faithful, he will give you.
Avarukkukkardukka readyaarukkar.
He is ready to give you.
Ananee adha, yentpidi useponrunkharadu, onudiyachay.
And it is your choice how you make use of it.
Ananarandakkeedenna?
But what is the treachery happened here?
Rendavud abishayakam kadayachaparak.
After he received the second anointing.
Avan adha maintainpanla.
He could not maintain.
Avam mind mudhusum, pengalpakkam poits.
His mind is full of, to turn towards women.
Adha avan de vilchikicarname kaam.
And this became the reason for the falling.
Sabikulla vandhitaparak.
After coming to the church.
Anandramillai, pennandramillai, ncholidu, maam siguma, narakaradukkandha vasanthathay useponakudara.
And you should not use the verse during the carnival, because there is no difference between man and woman.
Ellathukoru limitiruk.
There is a limit for everything.
Andha limitliyada, nengapo.
And you have to maintain in that limit.
Avasiyam illama, vedugalukku poogukudara.
And without any need, you should not go to the house.
Avasiyam illamal, vedu sandipukulukku, nengal chellakudara.
And without any need, you should not go for the visiting of house.
Shoma, ingavandham, pesunam, kaapi kudchen, chorisapthai, abrinupogukudada, apidi yedavu, thavaranapadakalay, nengal vaitirundhal, nengal thundiikanu, illavita, abishayathadu, adhutthastappukkani varammaathai.
If you have any wrong marks, you have to disconnect it and you cannot come to the second part of the anointing.
Onnam, rajaakkal, nam padikumbo.
When we look into kings.
Salamone udiyavalkaila narandha thingaladu.
And what the evil happened in the life of Solomon was that?
Yepidi rendavvisay, kattaravane, rajaavaka maathinaro, adheepola, rendavvisay, avanay achcharittha.
And how he anointed second time, the same way the Lord warned him second time.
Magane, nee porudhu thavur.
Son, the path you traverse is wrong.
Magane, nee porudhu thavur.
The path you traverse is wrong.
Unakku oru sopunang kadaykam.
And there will be, there will be vision for you.
Unavada periyavanga, unakka halosunacholuvanga.
And greater about you will counsel you.
Tirkadasinavaro.
There will be prophecy.
Prasangal chaattamari varu.
And there will be message like a whip.
Ulyakarangunakandipada.
And the servant of God will control you.
Karakpanla, nee rendavud kattathuladu, munaavud kattathukpoomdiya.
If you do not write yourself and you cannot cross the second step.
Onnurajakkal, 1:19.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 9, verse 11.
Rendavisay rajaavaka maathappattapadinaal, irandavisay avanay achcharikida.
And he became twice, he was anointed, twice he was warned.
Aagyal israveli devanaka, kattar, salamoneukku, irandavisay darshanamagi, aniyyadeevagali, pinpatavendam, endhakattliyittirundu, avan kattari vittu, tanirthayithithirupi.
Padigala, rendavisay abishayakam bannappattanala, avanukka warning ethranthup kodukkaradu.
How many times he was anointed, he was given warning for, how many times?
Neepo narutu sariyilla.
You, the path you traverse is wrong.
Nee abishayakam bannappattavan.
And you were the anointed.
Unde sayalkal, indha ikkay, othoradu.
And there is no actions that he was contrary to.
Au chollukkarari, ellavatthi, anubavike, enakka adigara undu.
And Paul say, "I have willing to accept everything."
Ananauuliyanchigarandhu, uliyathukadu, tagdiyayira.
But it is not worthy for the ministry which I do.
Velakathanam epidi anubavikala, anandhamarkathukadu, odavadu.
And we can experience this world in any way, but this way, it is not considered.
Salamone, third, muntraavud kattathukavarevayilla.
And Solomon did not come to the third state.
Adhukparukka devanavane, nisayarumstharay, orangattarumsthar.
And he started to keep God away.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Indike namdya message, taavidum, muntrukattu abishayakam.
Today's messages, David and three states of anointing.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Ingene nam parkumboladu.
When he comes here.
Onnusamwel 16:3, the god said of him, "You take the oil of oil and anoint the, see the son of him." Indha abishayakam, epoladu, paninandavasanaathala, avan meli erangichar.
Now this anointing is resting upon him in 12th verse.
Paninandavasanaathala, kattar cholrara, ivantha, ivan melabishayakam bannukkar.
And he was the one who is anointing.
Panimuntra vasanaathala, thailakombai edhuthu, avan sagodharar naduville, avan abishayakam bannappattan.
And they took the horn of oil and anointed in midst of his brethren.
Adu varikoru sadaarna mansha.
And till now, he was a ordinary person.
Adu adu machi, adu beechikondrana.
And he was the one flocking the sheep.
Anan enneki narandadu enna?
But what had happened then?
Avanukku oru abishayam kadayadu.
And he received anointing.
Avan de valve, epoladu, tanlavarukaradu.
And his life come to the turning point.
Adu varikado, swaramathalathal, konjanaravastikutrap.
Until now, he used to have half.
Adu machikutrap.
And he used to flock the sheep.
Idhu da avanukke terinchu uuliyam.
And this was the ministry that is known to him.
Anan enneki narandadu enna?
And what happened then?
Enneki thidiirunna, avanay vedathadi, vandhu, avanakkuuputte, samuel, avanay kattarkaha, abishayakam bannu.
Then suddenly, they sought after him to the home and they anointed for him for God.
Kathodiyae parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Naipom modalkattu abishayathadu, daye sayalbadugala, ungalukke chollavirubukrar.
Now, I want to tell the actions of the first status of anointing.
Nengelarmay, abishayakam bannappattavangala, irukkala.
And they all may be anointed one.
Avargal lifele, nengadha abishayathukuparag, avargal life, epdi nengakonduboninga, devan epdi avargal konduvarnar, pisas, avargal valkaila, epdi kodukavanda, velak, epdi venduchay, abrinu, avargalitere.
After you receive the anointing, you know how it watch path you traverse and what the Lord is leading you and how Satan crossed your way.
Modal abishayakam, sagodharar naduville, avanukka kadayadu.
The first anointing, he received among the brethren.
Veedla kadayach.
And he received in the house.
Avan irundha veedliyay, avanukka abishayakam, thadi vandhu kadayach.
In the house, he reside, the anointing came in sort of him.
Avargalke abishayam kadayach, yedha, yavuvaruka.
Can you identify the place where you received anointing?
Abishayam kadayach, date, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember the day that you received anointing?
Orunnal, oru veedliyani, kuuktaaga.
One person, they call him at home.
Engveedla, virduchirukka.
And we had a feast at home.
Chappadavanga.
You come and have feast.
Naganenethukila.
I asked for what reason?
Yam payya abishayakam bettanal.
And this is the date where my son got anointing.
Ippidiyum bendikasla, oru team irukkandu.
And there is a team in bendikas like this.
Naga parananal kondatradu.
And we will not celebrate birthday.
Yam payyaneneshithu, kattar, abishayakam bannanala, thana, anisiro, fist vikro.
And we will conduct feast, loving our son and pray, day we had anointed.
Avargalke engavichabishayam kadayach, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember the place where you got anointing?
Endhamarathadilay, endha chachilay, endha hallay, enthramaniki, endha erathle, endha soonnelila, kattar, avargalke abishayam koduthanay, yavuvaruka.
Do you remember what occasion and under which tree and with what time, what day, you have received the anointing?
Veedla, sagodharar naduville, avanukka abishayam kadayach.
And he received the anointing amidst of the brethren in the house.
Avan appabbi pathukkadeerndar.
And father looked at him.
Avan annanallan pathukkadeerndar.
And brothers looked at him.
Ellarukkanbuudha, parkumboladu, abishayakathaila.
When they all looked at him, the horn of oil was given upon him.
Kattar ivanay, tanakkandre, abishayakam bannup.
The Lord anointed him for himself.
Appidi oru abishayaka, avanukka kadayach.
And such anointing he received.
Adu varikisadaarna, mayindavu.
Until then, he was an ordinary one.
Abishayaka, vandha, unna, life.
And when he got this anointing, and when he got this anointing, his life was changed.
Onnusamwel 16:18. Oray, andha abishayathal, takkun oru change.
And there was a great change with the anointing.
Appadunandha velekarril, oruven pradithramaga, idho betlagemiinaagi, eesaay, kumarana, oruvene, kandirikre, avan vasipathil, thairinavan, avan barakramasali, yuttaveeran, kariyasamathan, saundarya mulavan, kattar, avunodu, kodu, irukkarar, enrad.
Abishayak, epidi maathirizha, avanapadigala?
And see how the anointing changed him.
Ah, avan kariyasamathan.
And he was a cunning in playing.
Avan vasipathil, thairinavand.
And he was cunning in playing.
Avan barakramasali.
And he is a mighty man of valor.
Avan yuttaveeran.
And he is a man of war.
Avan saunduryam mulav.
And he is a complete person.
Kattar avunodu irukkar.
And the Lord was with him.
Abishayaka, oruva kulla, varumboladu, oru life, oru transformation varnu.
When anointing come upon you, there should be transformation in your life.
Oru maru roomavarnu.
There should be transformation in your life.
Idhu saulukulla, aharabathala, narandadu.
And this happened in the life of Saul in the beginning.
Onnusamwel 18:10.
Indha abishayakam kadayathapodu. When he received this anointing.
Onnusamwel 16:3.
When we look into first Samuel, chapter 10, verse 6.
Appadukkatturudiyavi, unmail erangava, nee, avargalodu, kodu, dhirgadrisam, soli, vera manushinavai.
Modal abishayakam, saulay, vera manushanai, maathit.
The first verse, the anointing of the Saul made him a different, a different person.
Onnusamwel 18:1.
First Samuel, chapter 10, verse 9.
Avan samueli, vittupogumadi, thiruminapodu, devan, avanukka, vera, irthayithikodutha.
Modal abishayathal, saulukku, vera, irthayam kadayathu, vera, manushanai, avan mariyana.
In the first anointing with Saul received, he became another person and another heart was given to him.
Anal enna unakku puriyalayoh, illa, teriyalayoh, unakku padam teriyadu, nalai, second ke pohamavutik.
But he could not identify, could not understand, so he could not enter to the second step.
Namachil, namapilligala, padikina, orusalallan, primary school, neenipadiranga.
When we see some of the children, they were stopped, seized in a primary school.
Adhutthakana? Adhutthakana, primary school, nae ethanade, 5 variki?
Till 7 standard.
Adhuttham middle.
Then middle school.
Adu 8.
Till 8 standard.
Adhu dana? Adhuttham? Chalunga? Ha, high school.
High school.
Adu 10th.
Higher secondary, plus 1, plus 2.
And higher secondary. Adhutthakana, college, nee, engkay, neenipadirken, terli, enake.
And higher secondary, plus 1, plus 2, then after college.
Engkay, neenipadirginga?
abishayatla primary stage liyani paditingla
did you stop your anointing in a primary state? and one who stopped the anointing in primary level, he is called Saul and he was stopped there and he wanted to reach it till the suicide point how was our life today? you have to analyze yourself in what stage you are may the God's holy name be glorified this first anointing made David a mighty man of valor, a complete person, cunning in playing when we look unto first Samuel chapter seventeen verse thirty four he said so, after I received anointing, how I was after you receive anointing, you overcome a prevail over the line and you overcome this after you receive anointing, you have the power to resist against the devil and you have to resist the evil powers the first state of the anointing is resist against the Satan you have to tear the line and tear the bed and you will become a divine one what is the meaning cunning in playing? not playing only guitar? and afterwards, you will have attention towards the Bible more and you have to meditate and analyze the word of God, there is eternal life may the God's holy name be glorified when he was stood and anointing, there was many conflict found and he was a new one anointing and he received the new anointing, he could not maintain his life properly in the beginning, we received anointing, we did not know what to do unknowingly, we have lost grace many times and I also counted laws many times and they used to say about the teachers, that one who were not born in spirit and water, he could not reach the kingdom of heaven, and they did not test it, tell about their anointing and this anointing is there and with this anointing, he slain Goliat and this anointing is making a ruler and with this first anointing, he slain Goliat in a single beat and before that, he could not beat anyone properly how many stones he took? and he took five stones and this anointing made him to beat in a single beat if your anointing is proper, within a single beat, you will prevail over the Satan and see the how and how has changed his life and he, one who was flocking the sheep and one who was staring the line and his duty was over now he came to the battlefield now he came to the battlefield and overtook Goliat now he overtook Goliat now where he gone? and there is no work to flock the sheep and he came to the palace and this was a treachery happened to him here and what was the posting he received when he slain Goliat? after you receive children, you will get the job, you will get marriage and you will give children everything and wealth and everything, and after that, you will go to the next place and after you receive anointing, everything will be given to you and one who was called for the marriage, he said so and when he was called for the marriage, and after he will go on for the feast your mind was gone to a different level and he said so, and I've got new building, I will not come and I said, I got a new come, I will go after that after you receive anointing, the Lord will give you the fullness of blessings and wealth and everything to your deliverance, but you should not keep your eye after it after he received the anointing and he was not looking towards the bed or liner, and when he slain the Goliat and his attention turned towards the palace after he received the anointing and he was went after the palace, and gives attention paid towards the Micah
and Satan will look unto you what you love most
and we can see in the Bible, Micah and David loved each other and Saul looked unto him, and he wanted to defeat David in this way and according that, he married and settled in his life how many days? how many days he stayed there? when Saul heard that he was in the house, and he wanted to kill him on that day itself and from that day, he completely forgot Micah and what you love most and with that, Satan become and attack you after you receive anointing, if you are paying attention or contrary towards the word of God and love of God and to the met word of God, and it became a snide for you so and after he getting some wealth and possessions, and his strange mind was changed a little bit and one who received a car newly and he used, attention has paid only towards the car and not towards the word of God and Bible reading how you have to read? he came to the battlefield and he taken all this, milk house and apothuses and came to the battlefield he could not find his brother when there was an announcement, declaration said about who overcome Goliat, and the daughter of king will be given as a son-in-law to him, and with looking into this, he was forget the brother and when the one person was replied unto him, and one who was slaying or defeating Goliat, and will be given as a palace for him and possessions will be given to him and while speaking, who came there? and brother came there why did you come here? why, who asked to come here? did you flee away all the flame? and he scolded at him and he was scolded and he was just making a round there if I kill him, what will he get? his mind gone there? where your mind was diverted, his mind was diverted to the marriage and the possessions and the things of the world, and somehow the Satan is diverting your mind and through anointing, he received somewhat victory, but because of the wife, and he was roaming around the wilderness what happened next? and who was with him? and we can see the team which is found in first Samuel chapter twenty two verse two and he should be found in the palace, but he was found with the person though a distressed and discontented and one who were murmuring when we look twenty one thirteen of first Samuel and we can see that David was found and changed his behavior before the feign himself in mad and spittleful upon if you make use of anointing not in a proper way, it make you a mad if you stay not in a proper place and you will become, preferably with a distressed person and a discontented and one who was dead now the anointing was there when we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty one verse two and the priest asked unto him, why did you come alone? and he said so, a business of king I come here how presumptuously you are telling lie to a servant of God? you have anointing and you were the son-in-law of a king, and why did you come alone? he said, because of king's business I have come alone the business of kin is so hasty, I have come alone, many of believers are lying this way what happened then? and if you are not anointing the anointing properly and you will not get the full and shelter when we look unto first Samuel chapter three verse eight and he could not get even a single time of meal and he looking at the priest for a bread and he had to take this sword in his hand now he said, there is no weapon in my hand and if you are not using the anointing properly, you will become the person without any weapon if you are a man of war, you must have the sword with in your hand if you do not have a sword in your hands, and the devil will overcome you now you were begging to the man's hand I need money I need this I need that you are the anointed one you ask unto God why you want to ask unto man? you had anointing even so, you would look like David, you did not maintain the anointing properly now you desire to eat, you could not eat when we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty five verse eight and we were saluting with the man and was asking him to give something to him and he that will fail upon God will prosper and going, you not have anything you are the anointed one you are the blessed one you are rich in anointing, why you want to beg to others? and why you came to the state that you want to beg to others? when the servants of God visit your home, and you should have, you should not come and ask to beg to others' house and give them and you should not argue the debt from other friends and should give if you have coffee, you can give if you have nothing, you give water and if you have got better time, you can give something to them and without money, you should not receive debts and give to them you say so, that if you give only offering will be blessed, and you do not have anything, why you should have to give? and you should not ask God it may be a Muslim house and what they think about it it may be a Hindu house and what they think about it and they may believe what they think about you why I said this? once I went to the company for a prayer and there is a four companies in a single branch and one division in one part one is computer division and another is printing division and the new building division in a single building, there is different parts they have and they mind their own business and they go I went to pray in a single building I prayed and one believer, he was found individual, that he called for a prayer I went there the next, the building was about Hindu and one who was having rent and a pen in the printing area, he made all the bananas fleece and plain there I prayed for that division and the believer who was carrying the Bible, one who celebrated the Bhadavajah, he will ask money to him they think about us that and with the pastor come, they have to give money, actually so, he gave the money to him I am just not mocking, you have to meditate if you want to give money, you must ask, you must have money at all the time in the ark of the Nova, all the creatures of the world were in pair now they opened the door and everyone went outside and he had an offering to give, a sacrifice to God and he offered a sacrifice and lots of money, it is sweet swelling sable and two of them were seeking after the ash one was Saul and a servant and they sought after for a long distance at last, the son of God said so, if they tell about the ash, they said the story and the Saul would say that if we were looking after the man and the servant of Saul said so, I have, I will give and even if you do not have the Lord look unto your emptiness the Lord visit you and he will come and give you an abundance you must stay on knees, I don't have power to give to the place I have given, and your Lord will come and bless you I visited a place on way and there was no man to make me to sit there and there was no man to kneel down on praying it was such a house there was no fan and it was an upper chamber with a seat I prayed there and came I transferred to some other place then I become preacher and went to the convention and I looked there they introduced one person and he has spent eighteen lakhs of money for the convention and he said so, you don't want to spend any kind of spending and he was an important person in the church and past vestly dedicated his house when I enquired at him and he was the one who would not have mats to spread on and the Lord who gives will give in an abundance You have to believe. And with anointing you have, you should not beg hands to others. And you should not beg hands to others. When we look on two first Samuel chapter seventeen verse twenty-eight. And all the brother hated him. I tell you about the folding and raising up of the first state of anointing. And one part, he is throwing up the line and bed and going out. But he could not maintain it properly, so like an animal, he was going upon the forest in the wilderness. And Saul is ready to somehow defeat him. Glory be to the God's holy name. And the days had passed. The Lord took him to the second state of anointing. Second Samuel. Second chapter. Fourth verse. And second part of anointing. And David was anointed twice, second time. And this is the kingly anointing. It is not among the brethren. And we look on the second chapter first verse, I received the anointing, hey, Bronn. And this is the anointing which is given upon David over the house of Judah. After you receive anointing, you are not a king. And you are sitting in that posting. He received the anointing. He roomed somewhere. And second time he received the anointing. Look properly, he become the king over house of Judah. How many tribes were there? There were twelve tribes. Only in the tribe of Judah, he received the anointing. How many days he stood there? When we look on two, second Samuel chapter three. When we look on the fifth chapter. Seven years, six months of time, he was a king. Five, five of second Samuel. And he received the second part of anointing and hid right over the Judah for seven and a half years. When we tell Ebron, it is a unity of the fellowship. It shows the church. When we tell Judah, it is praise. The second position or second part of the status of anointing will make you the person who prays God and pray Oria. What does the goodness we receive from this? Second Samuel chapter three verse one. This anointing will make you stronger. It make you to prosper your family. As the individual, a personal person, you will become a king. Now, all your labor of your hands will be blessed. All the days he come past will be stronger, your family will prosper. And some of the things you have in overcoming life. Listen properly. When we come to the second level of anointing, there is a overcoming life. Until then, he did not have the overcoming life. Now his victorious life begin. Not upon everything. Only upon one tribe, there is only one part he is having the overcoming life. In your family life, there is a victory. In your victory in business. Now he is a king. For seven and a half years he was running. In which state is of anointing you are, you identify yourself. Is it in second level of anointing? And seven and a half years was break there. What happened there? When we look on to the outer confession, it was amazing. Second Samuel chapter three verse thirty-nine. And this is the, a confession which comes out of his mouth in the second level of anointing. You have to visit the problems properly, you must ask properly. You must ask it properly. If you have any doubts after the meeting, you can ask me. The first level of anointing made him to cross the particular limit and we can see some of the failures in his personal life. In second level of anointing and he have made failures in his spiritual life. On one part, the victorious life begin. And he command his prayer time and was praying for a long time. And give me come, he becomes stronger and stronger. And his family was prospering. And it was going in a particular style. When we called the David, he is a king. Until then, he was not receiving the name called. Now, he was resting with the kingly anointing. But only one tribe he got victory. Yet he have eleven tribes and it is not coming under his control. And seven and a half years he was striving. And seven and a half years rested in that anointing. Until, even I was anointed as a king, I am, I am weak in this day. What was the reason? The reason is the sons of Zeruya were too hard for me. And he could say able to win over the Saul, but he is not able to win over the sons of Zeruya. In second Samuel chapter three verse one, he overcome Saul. The same chapter, the last verse, he was getting defeated with the sons of Zeruya. In some things you got victory and some of things you fail, fail here. Who was the sons of Zeruya? One is Joab. And second is Abisham. And third is Hesekiel. These three are the sons of Zeruya and said, so, they are stronger than me. These three are three different characters. And one is a revenge. And one is not able to sustain him. And one is adamant. And these three overtook him. When we read in Bible. When we look on to second Samuel chapter three verse twenty-seven. And because of brother and Joab, they made him to. Sixteen nineteen of second Samuel. When Abisham was spoke by someone, he could not contain it. Two twenty-one of second Samuel. And we can see the added nature of Hesekiel. These three are different characters. And Joab could not control without revenging others. Abisham could get the beating, but he could not speak of others. And some, they used to say, if they shame before others, they could not control themselves. A Banglour, a mother used to testify that I am a dust, I am dung, I am nothing. Whenever she testified, praise the Lord, I am dust and dung. And this is a habit for her. The Sunday school children. And they called at her, the dust and dung was going. And they said that I was not dust, I was dung. And she said, so, what you teach in the Sunday school and when they call me as a dust and dung and you says like the testifying and they are calling you this way. And what you said was true. When other call you was dust and you have to remain silent. And you must say hallelujah. And you must say, is I am a dust. And some could not count in the words and they make attention. And that was Abisham. One person mocked at David and he said, so, why you remain silent? And David was making a profession that these three sons are overcoming me. Or you like that? Even if you feel an anointing, are you having the spirit of taking vengeance? And even someone is speaking against you, take fasting for three days, are you praying and praise the Lord? Are you having the adamant nature? You may come to the second step of anointing. In some certain things, you might have received the overcoming nature. But the Bible say you must receive the entire overcoming. When you look this. And this is the second level of anointing. When we look on to the same second chapter seven five. Israel in mail. This is the third level of anointing upon Israel. What does it mean? And he became the king over Israel. He was anointed over all Israel and he become the king of all, able to control over all tribes. And this is the third level of anointing. Step by step, he is coming up. And there was trembling in his mind. Failures. And he cried. And he fast. And he is getting beating. Even so, he was coming to the next step of anointing. And this is the third level of anointing. In the third level of anointing, he sustained and stood there till the end of his life. How many years? The entire perfection of life for thirty-three and a half years. And thirty-three years and he was a king over all Israel and Judah and Jerusalem. And this is the perfection in his life. How many are able to change like this? May the God's holy name be glorified. After he received the third level of anointing, there was a total change in his life. In one part, he received failure. And the Lord is giving him judgment. But he still is not leaving him. When you get beating, I used to say, my grace of God is forever for me. And the Lord beat him nightly. Three days, seven days, he will not eat and he remains silent. And he said, so, son was dead. And he said, in him is, you have the Lord ended it forever. Falling upon the feet of him and he was great, reached with the third level of anointing. In what state of anointing you have. When you come to the third level of anointing, what will happen? He come to the third level of anointing in second Samuel chapter four, fifth verse. What happened there? Five, seven of second Samuel. David took the stronghold of Zion. When did he took? First table of anointing, he do not know what is Zion. In second level of anointing, who do not know where is Zion? When he took the third level of anointing, he went to this stronghold of Zion. And no believer, no servant of God can receive the Zion and New Jerusalem simultaneously and without receiving the third kind of state of anointing. And no done properly and no servant of God reach Zion and no believer can reach Jerusalem even if they receive the third level of anointing. Anointing will take you to Zion. Anointing will take you to New Jerusalem. Anointing will not leave in the halfway. You must come to the next step. That's what we conduct tarring meeting every week. So, we are giving the worship session in the tarring meeting and a Bible study. This anointing was staying in you forever. Seven and a half years in one tribe and all over Israel for thirty-three years, he was a king. Overall Israel, I will take a speaks about the subject in your Wednesday. If you have interest, you come. Most of the believers are not coming for the Bible study. And in some way, you have come here today. They remember that it was Sunday today. One, he took the stronghold of Zion. The first part of the third level of anointing, you must become the person of the kingdom of heaven. Second, second Samuel chapter five verse seventeen. And when they received the first level of anointing, no one came after him, but when he received the anointing over all Israel and he came to. When you receive the third level of anointing, Satan will come against you. When Jesus was born, he came to make him. And he was baptized, you came to tempt him. And he said, so, the prince of the world come unto me, that things of the thing was not unto me. In every state, Satan will come to you. Not only the thing that you receive on a baptism, he will come unto you and he received the third state of anointing, he came unto him. What he did so? And beautifully, he went to the place was safe and he went there. The third level of anointing will preserve you in his stance. And the Lord will keep you in his stance at the days of evil. And he went to the safest place. And the name of the Lord is a strong tower and he is a refuge for me. And you have to refuge yourself. And it is not needed for you to fight. You have to cover yourself. And he, the dweller of the hell, Almighty, the most high, he will stay in the Almighty. The third level of anointing will take you to Zion and New Jerusalem and it will make you a person and a strong tower, a righteous run to it. The third part of the third state of anointing. When we look on to second Samuel chapter five. And these enemies started resisting against David. What happened there? And he discovered the Satan and the enemies that brought him were looking around it. When we look on to second Samuel chapter five verse twenty. In that place, it is called the Baal Perazim. And if we can see. And it is mentioned here as a name called the Baal Perazim and they make it broken upon the enemies before me as a breach of waters. And what are the things you feared about and all the powers will be scattered. To watch with powers, you were scattered and you were trembled around, the Lord will scatter under all those powers. The other super point was. When the third anointing comes. The ark will come unto you. When we look on to second Samuel chapter six. And David brought the ark of God to his house. Twelfth verse. Are you believing the ark is coming unto you? And you have to step into the third level of anointing. After that, the next level is he wants to build the temple of God. What had a desire for him? He want to build the temple. I want to see God. Until I receive the habitation of dwelling for Jacob, I do not want to sleep slumber to my eyelids. When we look into 2 Samuel 7:2. Somehow I have to build the temple. I am in the babe's house. And it is found the sedatory. I have built a temple for a house of God. I want to see the dwelling of God. In 2 Samuel 32, we can see and I will not come into the tap in a clock in my house, I will not sleep to my eyes and I slumber to my eyelids. What was you today now? You are the temple of God. The temple of God is holy. When you come to the third level of anointing, you will think more about your life. Until now, you have problem of your money. And you may be old, you may be sick. Without this anointing, you cannot become all over comma. If it is not true, you will not be able to build the temple. I am in the babe's house. And it is found the sedatory. I have built a temple for a house of God. I want to see the dwelling of God. In 2 Samuel 32, we can see and I will not come into the tap in a clock in my house, I will not sleep to my eyes and I slumber to my eyelids. What was you today now? You are the temple of God. The temple of God is holy. When you come to the third level of anointing, you will think more about your life. Until now, you have problem of your money. And you may be old, you may be sick. Without this anointing, you cannot become all over comma. And if you receive not the third level of anointing, you will have the problems of your family, your children and what you provide and the positions and job. And you will think about more, have to see about God and seek after the things of the Lord. His intentions and thoughts are about the temple of God. His intention about the temple of God. It said, "So now Moses had a pattern of building a temple and he have given the pattern in my hands." And such a pattern was given, delivered in my hands. And simply or ordinarily, I did not come to this temple. First Chronicle, 28:9. Until you make this temple of God as a holy and the God's written Bible is vested in your hands. And David said, "So the Lord made me understanding why writing is given upon my hands." Your life and my life to be built up and the God's Bible was given and delivered in our hands. One is the anointing of Zion, will come, said third level of anointing comes, you become a Zion and you Jerusalem. Any powers may come against you, but you will go to the refused place and you will protect yourself. And any kind of battle will become against you, will conquer. Fourthly, the ark will return unto you. All your intention, thoughts and desires and all your slumber and sleep will be somehow you want to build the temple of God. And such intention, thoughts will come to you. In one state, you may have other worldly things, but now when you close your eyes, I have reached unto heaven that your thoughts. And that is the third level of anointing. It is all close your eyes. A force will bend your knees. And what kind of anointing you have and what is the state of your anointing? And Lord want to deal with you. Now, the word of God was hearkened in your both ears. I give you some of time. You will just check yourself, what condition of anointing you have. Are you Saul? Are you Solomon? Are you David? First anointing. Second level of anointing. A third level of anointing. I gave you many evidence to the word of God, you to identify yourself with what state of anointing you rest. Perhaps. You may be without anointing, ask unto God, give me anointing. For many years, you may be without anointing and you stay in the first level of anointing, ask for the second level of anointing, I want to begin my victorious life. I want to do a overcoming life beginning in me. Or I am tarrying for the Lord to give me the third level of anointing. It is enough for me to strive forward and I want to become a overcomer. I want to become a overcomer in all kinds of places. I want to overcome those love against me. When we get this mind. Your Zion, your Jerusalem will come before you. Any power may come against you, but you will rescue yourself. And any kind of battle will come, you will conquer. And the Lord, all that you have lost, will come seek after you. Grace, gifts and talents will seek after you. All your thoughts become built in the temple of God. All your thoughts and mind become their for holiness. And you will consecrate yourself for holiness. And you will cry for holiness. You will empty yourself for holiness. You will consecrate your sleep and slumber for holiness. And your bed will be consecrated for holiness. I want to see the dwelling of Lord of Jacob. Your child of God. What anointing you have and rests upon you? Those who want to raise up your hands. I stay in second level of anointing, I was having a just overcoming life, I was infertile, I was a adamant nature, those who say, "Raise up your hands." Dear the believer, don't stay in this. It is in it. And it was in the day, but stay in the seven and a half years. And God want to become a king over all over Israel. The reason for you to call him here is that you must become a overcomer. And the plan of God concerning you in his mind, does you become an entire overcomer? And how many have this hope? How many of you have this belief? A question. And those who say that I was on the third level of anointing for the closure of this meeting, let us come to that state. And lift up your right hand. Lord, if it is true that you have given the third state of anointing to David, you give to me also. If you read about Jesus, you will be shocked and amazed. And there is anointing in his birth. In his growth, there is anointing. In baptism, there is anointing. Anointing in his ministry. After he was dead, there was anointing. There is anointing of Zion. How many decide for the third level of anointing? Those persons lift up your right hand. If you asked only for this five experience, the third level of anointing will come and rest upon you. The sign and symbol of the anointing rest upon you is you will become a Zion and a Jerusalem. And you will become a new Jerusalem, which was a down and is a bride. You will be escaped from the old slayer of the enemy. All the battle you will face anymore will become a conquest for you. What you lost will come back unto you. All your mind will be holiness. The purpose of the message, I have urging to speak about this verse today. And if I had such a conflict and how conflict the Lord may have. And the Lord have come in amidst to take other people to the third state of anointing. I had a desire. I want to see the person those who are going to receive the third level of anointing. This anointing design in our midst, if you are receiving, you are blessed. Jesus! Shidabala Kethidabaniah! Amen. And this meeting will extend, will follow in for ten minutes. Without receiving the fifth state of, the third state of anointing, no servant of God. A believer should not depart from this place and without receiving the third level of anointing. Strive with him. Do not leave him. You hold him. You just pour upon the head of oil that you are oil the command on this. Lord Jesus poured upon my head. Amen. If it is true that Lord have given the three is the third level of anointing as a message for you. If it is true that it is needed for you, the Lord had sent that word to you. I believe. The Lord should stand in our midst with a while of oil in his hands. Don't allow him to cross over you. Let him pour upon your head. Let him pour upon the anointing oil upon your head. Yes, we want to. Want to. Want to. Hallelujah! Amen. You may be an old believer. You may be the weak. You may be with any kind of sickness. You may be any kind of person. Without this anointing, you cannot become all over comma. Once you have surrendered unto him. At least you surrendered the word to him. You can pray this way. If it is true that there is a third level of anointing, let it come upon me. I am Muslim, went to a meeting. In that meeting, Jesus came as a light was preached. He asked. Is there any power which is more significant than Allah, let it come upon me? And straightly, a light come upon him and thrown him away. And he stumbled and stood up. And before he asked, such pass he came upon me. I am standing steadily. If it is true, the God is Jesus, let the light come upon me. Before the word was ended and the light touched him. He fell down. And it was shame for him. Too light, it is more than Allah and a true Jesus and it came upon our hands. I ask a question now. I am a great drunkard. If the power of Jesus is the true light and it come and touch me and give a deliverance. The next second, that change of power of the today is a day that came upon him. And the drunken spirit left him. Now, he was doing the service for God. Are you believing? If it is true that third level of anointing. Bend your knees. And without this anointing, there is no use of living. And there is no use of anointing without this anointing. And without anointing, there is no use of coming to this church. Lord pour upon me. Lord sanctify my hearts. Lord change me through anointing.
Lord change me through anointing.
Uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave. Uthidu virdeva. Ellar, ellar abishakathikadukkada. Sutirula. Veckapadadiya. Uthidu virdeva, imi maachiruma abishigata, imi maachiruma abishigata. Uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, imi maachiruma abishigata. Enne maachiru. Imi maachiru. Uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, imi maachiruma abishigata. Enne maachiru. Oh, nuvaachiru, thidaba lakathidabaniya. Imi maachiruma abishigata, imi maachiru. Amen. Ella, ellavaliyavapayigapilligallam mulangal podu.
All young boys and girls bend your knees and stand.
Ellar, musicillavaynda, ellam mulangal podu.
All stand on knees.
Engarunnal mulangal podu.
Wherever you are, stand on knees.
Ella Sunday school teacher mulangal podu.
All Sunday school teachers stand on knees.
Innaki kattarunni muttarikappogura.
And Lord is going to seal you today.
Ini avvalkile narakkapora arpudungalai paarpai.
And you will see the wonders which begin in your life.
Unmoolamayanda arpudungal narakam.
The miracles will begin through you.
Un kankalkana narakam.
It is for the sake of your eyes.
Ipporu abishakay erangadu.
Now the anointing is coming to send upon us.
Andha abishakathodu nee po, nee vetisarakappaduva.
With that anointing, depart from this place and you will become a victorious person. That Lord will crown you victory through you.
Veckapadada.
Do not be insane.
Adakkivakkada.
Do not control yourself.
Veckapadada.
Do not feel shame.
Aviyanavar kodie ethattu.
The spirit of God and let's lift this banner upon you.
Rabbaniya, ey rabbalo. Uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave, imi maachiruma abishigata. Imi maachiruma abishigata, uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave. Liyara ba. Uthidu virdeva anbinayee suterula vuyathirave. Liyara ba. Uthidu virdeva abishigata. Imi maachiruma abishigata, imi maachiruma abishigata, imi maachiruma abishigata, imi maachiruma abishigata. Amen. Abishakathailathukku, edutukondi, samuvel, andha vittil kathirundha.
Taking the anointing oil, Sam will tar it in that house.
Modhalaavudhu oral vandhan.
First person, King.
Abishakathailathu uthappodu.
And he was started to pour his upon head.
Kattarchanar niruthu.
And Lord said to stop.
Nan mugathai parkaradhevan alla.
I am not the Lord looking into face.
Nan irudayathai parkaradhevan.
I am looking into the heart.
Evan alla.
He is not the person.
Rendavudhaal abishakaila.
And second person also not anointing.
Ipidi varisya poiukondairukke.
And one by one they were going.
Innupillayillaya.
And still there is no child.
Oruvarirukkara.
There is one person.
Avan varumattum naan abishakathai uthamattai.
Until he comes, I never pour anointing upon.
Needikiradhu andha oral kaha.
The meeting is extending for a single person.
En pillayae onakkahave, abishakathodu varu vendrukka.
My child, the Lord have come, the anointing for your sake.
Onakkahave andha abishakam kathirukkara.
The anointing is waiting only for you.
Andavre yen maila uthu.
Lord pour upon me.
Neetavida nalabishakavunakkata.
If you are David, the anointing is for you.
Enney maachiduma abishigata, enney maachiduma abishigata, enney maachiduma abishigata, enney maachiduma abishigata. Amen. Kattaruvadhigalaka istodramanva. Kattaruvaviyanavarmel wallameyay eranginaduka istodramanva. Kattar soligutthasatiyinkalaka istodramanva. Oru neravana abishakathipetthu purnamana oru devi kavalkai valdi, yeppludhyakkalam thunithalav avrisandike ellarkarul chayumudiyai istodramanva. Pidakkumaran parasutthaviyanavarkaka istodramanva. Ella magimi avirkayselthi istodramanva.
Prasatthumla nallanandavri, indha aasruthikuppada daanamda maymin somuthkai, ninndiyadu mistothirikiranga thaave, adyarake thaave karanthavaramla, nirdingla kanmanival padukathu, indha varthinvaral kaalavilila avi unnu meedumda somuthalara adike, mudda parasutthasomuthukukundundubrinala ninndiyadu mistothirikaro, kattarlamaygila, kattarla kaligura, aviinala nerappadhamda varthelakke, kattaringla kudissidhi, ka ninndiyadu mistothirikaro, mudda somuthalavaramda la, nirdingla aasruthikaravar, uyutpikaravaraga, engadha aththamavakthetichkaravaraga, mudda varthinala, engla thetichkaravara uyutpikaradevim, ma saktiyavasannathakun, engla uyutpikaradevina arukkadeerar, ka ninndiyadu mistothirikaro, aviyanavare, engdaa raande, ovvarpoddali, neen naratyasrutha, aviklaakattandeeradukaagam, gathothirandavari, kattadi aviyanavare, indha kaalavilil, engla, nirdingla odhupesinada, andha jeeva varthelka, ninndiyadu mistothirikiranga thaave, andavre, naagalu mudda rajaakala, marumidiaga, engla engla, andavre, engla abishakamanirkirirandavari, engda abishakathimudda, naagalu mudda kathakal, indha naalkilengal, kudeshimidiaga, veyndiklaru, gaththaave, andavre, imi gathothiran, sahwalai, andavre, gaththaave, avunna orumre, rajaavaga, abishakamanin, neerandavari, samukthaave, andavre, salamonne, rendudara, neeravu, abishakamanin, neerandavari, avanandha abishakathain, raja mainm, kathakalavli, gaththaave, thavide, moontuvala, neerabishakamanin, neerandavari, gaththaave, avunna sagodara, naduvala, neerabishakamanin, neerandavari, avan yuttavirenai irunda, andavari, avan kariyasamathana, puttisali, arindaduvala, naagalu mudda, gaththaavu, yuttavirenai, kariyasamathara, puttimangala, naagalu mudda, narandavala, englikun, neerudeshimidiaga, veyndiklaru, gaththaave, neerithaavide, abishakamanin, arindaduvala, engla mudda abishakithirikirirandavari, indha abishakathin, naalikathakal, udeshim, andhasan, gaththaave, thavide, andavre, sellakalangala, andavre, indha abishakathukke, andavre, edangudamal, palanalkalagat, maligalil, andavre, meedigalil, gaththaave, andavre, andavre, vanandharithal, avan narandhitirunda, andavre, neerumungaritha devan, abishakamanin, nadaan, devan thirbom, gaththaave, thirbomam, andha renduva, sae, nee, gaththaavu, rendaavu, sae, neerabishakamanin, neerandavari, andavre, avan varu, gaththaavu, andavre, avanukku rodamaga, israel, kudumathukkaram, yodanjanathukkaramaga, andavre, yuttam balathadu, andavre, thavide, varavara, balathanandha, naalikke, etam, andavre, naagalu mudda, varavara, balathar, balatharavara, abishakathakathukalavara, abishakathaputipikaravara, wallamey, puttipikaravamshada, naalikka, anappadengla, kudeshim, gaththaave, avan mondhamaraya, gaththaave, abishakamanapattan, andavre, avan mondhamaraya, abishakamanapattubadhu, gaththaave, sagala, israel, janangal, kam, rajaavaga, abishakamanapattan, andavre, avan abishakathakaputipitukundu, andavre, avan gaththaavu, abishakathana, nerindavanai, amda rajaavaram, paninana, andavre, adhuvala, naagalu mudda, gaththaave, indha abishakathakathukalengla, kudeshim, gaththaave, avan abishakathana, avan siyon kattai, pidittana, andavre, siyon kattai, gaththaavu, pidittakaththaave, andha rajaavaga, andavre, thirbomam, thandha, abishakathain, siyonin, abishakathain, erisalem, abishakathapathukathukundaduvala, naagalu mudda, siyon kattai, pidikke udeshi, engla kurodumai, edumara, skurudaran, saparuman, avigala, jayke, engla kuda, wallamey, abishakandandhu, gaththaave, naagalu mudda, siyonai, erisalem, amarappada, indha siyon, abishakathana, nerappadala, kanaapada, udeshim, gaththaave, andha rajaavaga, abishakamanin, arlandu, belishtar, kelupattu, avunkku rodamai, vandharla, andavre, annalam, avan, aranipan edathal, avan irunda, andavre, adhuvala, naagalu mudda, aranipan edathal, kankaapada, engla kudeshimidiaga, veyndiklaru, andavre, ni thingal, naalil, engda, tamda, kudanathan, maravali, marathukka, kankaadev, engla, bhaaduka, wallamala, devan arukkari, arukka, ninndiyadu mistothirikiranga thaave, aviyanavare, imi gathothirikiranga thaave, avan gaththaave, andavre, avunkku rodamai, satrakal, vandhavadu, satrakal, thanneer, udainthu, odukharaduvala, avan, gaththaavu, yuttamani, belishtare, jaytan, adhuvala, naagalu mudda, engliku, arugara, satrakal, andavre, abishakathana, lerapi, jayke, engliku, mudda, gurvathar, mediaga, veyndiklaru, gaththaave, andavre, avan satrakal, jaythu, andavre, devanudaya somuthalidu, gaththaave, avanai, gaththaavu, udanpadi, kappadi, thirbomamai, andavre, thandha, vittukukundunduvala, gaththaave, naagalu mudda, udanpadi, naalikputipitukundu, naagalu udanpadi, kappadi, ilai, anagalu mudda, andha parasutthathapathukathukalengla, kudeshim, veyndiklaru, gaththaave, avan gaththaave, andavre, devanude, Allahaita, kattumidiaga, vandha, vanchi, avukkala, vandha, gaththaave, andavre, naagalu mudda, ovvarum, naalik devanudaya Allahayamai, arukkara, andavre, neengla, devanudaya Allahayamadi, solipattukka, gaththaave, naagala Allahayamai, marumidiaga, engla, alaitthirikirirandavari, engda Allahaita, parasutthala, naalikpaadukkundu, andavre, neerepovundha, avsandike, engla, paadukathukal, engla, abishakathaputipitukundu, engda abishakathapalapadukundu, gaththaave, engla kurodumai, varugara, satrakal, naalik jaythu, jayaliyala, thavide, pola, gaththaave, andavre, jayaliyala, maru, yepriyadu, gaththaave, rajaathi, rajaam, sandike, indha abishakathai, engda prateshain, indha thirmanagal, illavatya, paadukathukundu, gaththaave, mesandike, engla, aytam, akkumidiaga, veyndiklaru, ketthadana, devatham, jeevitha, parasutthavakapattu, engda rajaathi, rajaavasandike, thayidipattu, mediaga, veyndiklaru, engda raja mainm, raja abishakathapathukathukundu, yepriyadu, andavari, kaga, engla, aytapaduthu, devasomuthalanda, ellamakla, aasruthi, tanpum, thudigana, meeduthukulu, esuve naamathal, veyndiklaru, pitaave.
Amen, namre kathraki esu kusunkrivaim, pitavagidhavam, devan dhanmuparsutthavi, naikiyamuk, namre, unusalaparsutthavangluda, kathraki esu, makimilavali, padumattu, mirupada.